Good evening, and welcome to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular session meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight, like address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters remain to council. We have a light system three minutes after saying your name and address will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, we'll see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. The city code identifies procedure participation regarding items on its agenda provides the opportunity for citizens to address council on matters that are germane to council. Copies of this ordinance can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Bishop Felton Hawkins with Full Gospel Kingdom Church provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Vic will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council. Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you for entrusting the leaders of this city with the responsibility to guide and support these citizens. We ask that you bless them with wisdom, knowledge, justice, and equity, enabling this city to shine and become a beacon of hope and progress for all. May peace, prosperity, and growth flourish as we strive to fulfill your perfect plan and purpose. Amen.
Amen.
Can you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one presentation on the agenda this evening. I'd like to invite Delegate Shirley Cooper to the podium to formally present the monitor Merrimack artwork to City Council.
As always, I have to crank it down. I come here tonight to honor you. That's why I'm here. I have been the chairman of the water supervisors of York County. I have been in the General Assembly of Virginia. I was an elected official for twenty-seven years. So I know what you're doing, and I know it's hard. And at city level, y'all back there, trust these people and go and talk to them. That's what they're there for, for you to talk to. They mean it. And I tell you this because that's why I stayed in office that long. And I come to you to tell you, you are remarkable. And I present to you, Mr. Mayor, this battle of the monitor Merrimack. And I present to the city this battle of the Merrimack and the monitor. I have been painting since I was nine years old. I taught in the school system. I taught at York High School, and I taught physics and math, but I can't spell. And Mrs. Vic, I want you to know I love Casey.
Oh, thank you.
And I want you to know I love Michael and the wonderful man that he has become.
Yes.
You can do it. And the words of this minister, this is a beacon of hope that just stood out in my mind tremendously over all of this. But I come to you telling you, the chief of police, he's mighty fine. He is working hard for everybody. So those of you that are listening out there, he is doing it right. And I will tell you, the fire department is doing it right. Number nine, fire department winds up at my church, Demby Church of Christ, right down the street from Demby High School all the time. And they are doing wonderful things. And what on earth, Department of Parks, you've got the best park in the whole United States sitting right here. Did you know that? Did you know that the Revolutionary War was fought there? Did you know that the Civil War was also fought there? Did you know that I walk there every time I can? Because I really love that park. There's nothing like this special place. My dad worked in the shipyard thirty-five years. I am originally a Hamptonian, I have to admit that. I was a crabber. And my brothers went to Kickitinn High School, and I graduated from Hampton in sixty-two. And buddy, did we fight with you guys, Newport News football team. But anyway, I came to praise you. I really mean that. I will go to work for you, and I have to say this, if my wonderful friend Bobby Scott decides to run for governor, I'm gonna be right there in the front row. And I've said an awful lot, and I know you don't have time for much more, but, Mr. Bethany, I present this to you. This is a petition, and I'm serious.
So they get paintings and I get the petition?
Let me tell you something, darling.
Yes, ma'am.
I will paint anything you want. You've got to give these people a swimming pool. You promised, the money's in the budget, and I've done my homework.
Okay.
And guess what? I'm gonna be swimming in that pool, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I live almost across the street from that pool. That give you an idea of where I am. So I think you're my representative. I proudly present you with this petition. I promised them I would come here tonight.
Yes.
And guess what? There's about two hundred people looking at you tonight. So please, if you can, put it on the, I know that it's been in the budget. I know the money is there, and I know there were other needs at this point and that point. But I very nicely beg you on bending knee, I'm gonna swim, y'all. Come on.
If you leave it with the clerk.
Yeah, how about this? I'll come take a photo with you in the painting.
Yes, sir.
And I'll grab the petition.
Yes, sir. I told you I was gonna be funny.
You did.
They didn't know what to do with me in the General Assembly.
We appreciate you.
I've done a lot of stuff.
All right.
So when we got the request a few weeks ago, I was like, wait, that Shirley Cooper, just growing up in here, not the legend, and for you to still be involved all these years. I mean, people don't realize how long you were in the General Assembly for, so we appreciate not only what you do for Newport News, but the entire Hampton Road. So whenever you want to come back, you just let us know.
Well, one last thing.
Okay.
I'm a big mouth.
Okay.
I'm eighty-one.
Wow.
But I rock you under the table.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you, ma'am. We're gonna go straight to, on that note, to public hearings. Item E one is request adopted ordinance, current granted conditional use permit, Charlie Uniform dash two zero two four dash zero zero one zero to C A H Holdings LLC and Autobell Car Wash LLC to allow for the operation of a car wash facility on a point nine-one acre parcel located at one three six nine eight Warwick Boulevard, Zone C one, Hotel Commercial. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, just one, Mr. Tim Trent, for questions only.
Questions only, City Council. Do we have any questions? Tim, I think we're good, but it's always, I think I saw him. Always good to see you. At this time, motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move and adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item E two is request adopted ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sales or condemnation portions of property for the two four zero one G Avenue K nine facility. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item F contains the following items. Page thirty-nine, minutes of the work session of December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Page fifty-two, minutes of the regular meeting of December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Items F one and F two, all inclusive.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this time, are there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Coleman?
I just wanted to ask the attorney, do I need to recuse myself from the vote on this? Because I was not on, I was not with the council.
You do not need to recuse yourself.
Okay.
But if you would like to abstain, as you weren't present.
I mean, I'm staying, excuse me. Okay.
Any further discussion from City Council? At this time, please call the roll, then.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. Page eighty-four, item G one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council. Item G one is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Newport News and the City of Hampton concerning the Central New Market Flood Mitigation Study. Severe flooding along New Market Creek affects both cities, particularly near their shared boundary, with impacts from tidal flooding and rainfall. A collaborative study funded in part by Hampton through Themas Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program will explore comprehensive solutions. Newport News plans to formalize an agreement with Hampton to implement the study and share the cost. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Page ninety-two, item G two, Mr. Manager.
Item G two is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the mutual aid agreement between the Air Base Wing, Joint Base Langley-Houstis, and the City of Newport News Fire Department for Fire and Emergency Services. This agreement allows both agencies to share fire and emergency services during emergencies, natural disasters, or when additional support is needed. The update ensures continued collaboration, legal protection, and reaffirms their commitment to community safety and mutual support. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page one oh one, item G three, Mr. Manager.
Item G three is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement by and between the City of Newport News and the Newport News Green Foundation Incorporated. The proposed agreement provides the Green Foundation with a temporary, non-exclusive license to install and maintain a sign at a designated location. This license is contingent upon compliance with all applicable laws, proper installation in a workmanlike manner, and measures to prevent damage to city property. I recommend approval.
At this time, we have one speaker, Ms. Tammy Farrenhold. Always good to see you, Tammy.
Tammy Farrenhold, Executive Director of the Newport News Green Foundation, just here to answer any questions you might have.
At this time, is there any questions from City Council?
I do have a question. Is the sign gonna be the same sign that's already there?
It'll be the new logo, so the one that's on Chatham Trail.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? I think we're good. Thanks, Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. There are no appropriations on the agenda for this evening. We'll now go to item I, citizen comments on matters germane to council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. To Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Bethany, and the council members, we stand before you tonight as I did about six months ago, and your post said transforming hearts, and I agree. I come back tonight to say thanks for your support. We borrowed a line from the medical department. We promise to do no harm. But I want to say a special thanks to Councilman Long. Sir, when you asked for more information because you believed in what we stand for, thank you for your vote of confidence that we could ask, you could provide, and we can make a difference in the city of Newport News. And the young lady mentioned how long she's been on the political world. Been a resident of Newport News for over forty years. Was not like the Israelites in the desert. But this is home for me. I have two young men with me to say to each of you, keep supporting us, and we will continue to make a difference. I am heartbroken to hear on the news a young male, white, black, Jew, Gentile, doesn't matter, seventeen years old, getting killed at two o'clock in the morning. When I was seventeen, two o'clock in the morning, I was in bed. So I plead with the dads that are hearing this, let us do a better job. Let us make a difference. Iron sharpens iron, and that's all we're here to do, is to make a difference. Somewhere in the past, I put this together called the character of a leader. We will adhere to the non-truths of life. We will love people with all our hearts, soul, and strength. We'll demonstrate joy in every situation. We will allow peace to be contagious. We will be patient with those within and without. We will have gentleness to be our badge of service. We will allow goodness to flow like a mighty stream. We will demonstrate faith in every situation. Meekness to be our strength, and self-control will be the glue to hold us together. God bless you, and thank you. We have a gift for each of you. Now, this is the uniqueness of it. I was gonna bring seven, but now I notice there are ten, and I brought ten. So for whatever reason, it worked out right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carol Carcuff, and I live at one ninety-seven Revelle Drive, Newport News, two three six oh eight. I've lived here twenty, about twenty-seven years now. It's a great place. But I come to find out that the City Council and whoever the powers might be, that thirty feet of my property and everybody else that lives here in Newport News, even though I own it and I pay taxes on it, I do not have the authority to do what I would like to do. The city tells me what I can and cannot do. It used to be thirty feet, now it's thirty-four feet from the curb. And quite frankly, that bothers me because if I pay tax on it, then I should be able to take care of it in the way that I would like to. The other thing that I think is really important, especially with the L.A. fires, is that the City of Newport News, and as a matter of fact, our whole of the United States, needs to take a real good look at our reservoirs and our fire hydrants to make sure everything is in proper and good fill. I called the City Water Department yesterday. I talked to five different people, and a young man came out about four thirty and checked my hydrant. I found that they are checked every six months to make sure that they are in proper condition. And mine is. Hooray. I do want to make sure that we are all aware that that is something that the city needs to be talking to the fire departments. They've got a big job, and we're all in prayer for L.A. I do want to say that because I'm a military wife, and I've helped people in finding places to live, we have a lot of hotels that are boarded up in our area that could be utilized for veteran and family living, and it could be operated like a hotel. That's something that the city can look into, and I think we could be doing a better job in serving our veterans, especially those that don't have a place to be. As you know, Newport News, our whole area, is the largest contingent of all military in the United States. I also want to say that the celebration of lights was very successful, was really a lot of fun. But please, don't raise the rates again. Twenty dollars, I had a coupon, but twenty dollars is a lot to many families. But it was very pretty, so thank you. And the other thing I want to comment on was that our recent edition of Visit Newport News, if you haven't seen it yet, it's well done, well-written, and, Mr. Jones, good photo.
I have not seen it, so I'll take a look.
I'll leave it for you. But thank you very much, and Happy New Year, happy, healthy, God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Robert Tye? And then Alan Tanner, and then John Bloom.
Good evening, Members of Council.
Good evening. You can put it up, no worries.
All right, thank you. I'm just here tonight, this forum, it's probably more appropriately directed at the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, but with everything that's passed since your last council meeting, I'm here to ask the city's position on Governor Youngkin's statement on sanctuary cities and compliance with his vision of immigration enforcement, because I know that he had threatened locality funding through rescinding five ninety-nine funding or DCGAS grants to law enforcement. And from my understanding, the city is like moderately compliant with ICE. ICE has some reservations about the city, and my take is that I think that the city residents need to know what position it's going to take, because it affects families. It affects their livelihoods, their housing, everything. And with this new administration coming in, people are on edge, and I think that just a statement in saying what the city's position is would be very, very helpful. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Tanner?
And then John Bloom. And then John Bloom.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. My name's Alan Tanner, and I've been before you several times recently, and I'm excited to be here again tonight. Couple of things have occurred over the holidays that bring up some concern. I represent Victory Parking Management. We manage parking in over thirteen different city blocks in the city. We have one parking lot that currently is on Thirty-Eighth Street. Thirty-Eighth Street has been a, but the new one, when they went to the one-way street configuration, is currently the only outlet for five city blocks to get toward Boulevard. And as everyone knows, from Washington Avenue and from Huntington Avenue, it's tough at various hours of the day. And that access has been blocked to all of the individuals that use Washington and Huntington to travel in and out of the city. It does not allow access to Warwick Boulevard. You have to go through another residential community to do it. Those intersections are not controlled by stoplights. This has a stoplight, and I would ask the city to look very hard at allowing a travel lane where the new parking garage is going, that will allow travel to go all the way down Thirty-Eighth Street. It's a huge parking deck, and it's very, very important for access for all the other property owners who have land along Thirty-Eighth Street, have land along Huntington and Warwick, excuse me, and Washington, to get in and out of town. It was, Thirty-Seventh Street was the way into the main gate, Thirty-Eighth Street was the street going out. And it's now being blocked and developed. And I would ask the city to look very hard at that, because timing is so critical for the men and women that work down there to get in and out of town efficiently. And going down two blocks and coming back is a concern. There is a very bright spot going, and it was great to see Pastor Hawke, Bishop Hawkins here tonight, giving our invocation. There are plans ongoing that the private sector has for the redevelopment of downtown Newport News. We want to be part of the discussion. We have tonight Curtis Cole here. He is a developer from the DC area. Curtis and his wife are here, would you raise your hand? Curtis has had an extensive background in development. And he and Bishop Hawkins want to redevelop the Palace Theater and the area around the Palace Theater. And I encourage you as a council to encourage a public-private partnership that the private sector, who own interest in thirteen, fourteen lots downtown Newport News at a minimum, to be part of the discussion on what goes on in our city, so that we aren't left in a vacuum with no voice. And I certainly appreciate your consideration of that. I would ask you to look very carefully at the process of vacating a street here in the city, and a street that is so vital as Thirty-Eighth Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Bloom?
Good evening, members of the city council and
Good evening.
and Mayor. I was a substitute teacher at Passage Middle School last, ended about the end of October. We had, when you took office, the very first month you took office, a six-year-old shot one of our teachers at Newport News schools, okay? And they made major changes, they got rid of some people and they added some more. Well, I want to tell you, I had a problem with one child. And I asked people to get involved, Ms. Patricia Skaggs, who's the AP at Passage for the sixth grade. Then I asked Mr. Munjin, who is the AP for the eighth grade, to get some help there, and also Mr. Kudoff, who is the AP for the seventh grade, to help me get some classroom management. I got none. Well, we had, they had a parents-teachers conference, and the parents came in, I kid you not, to tell us what was going on with their child. They were concerned that their child, who was a fifth grader in an elementary school, say if this sounds familiar, stabbed a teacher with a pencil. She was moved up to sixth grade. The parents and the teachers were never notified. I found this out at a parents-teachers conference. The parents came to that meeting because they were afraid that their child would harm someone else. Passage Middle School did nothing. Chris Smith talked to me about classroom management, I got no support. There really needs to be a unionization of teachers. And you're talking, and I'm a conservative, and I don't usually say that. But when a child should be in juvenile detention, where a pencil is considered a weapon, and they count them to make sure that no student takes that, and we have enterprise. Why in the world did you take that child and put them in there? Was this to cover up the fact that you had a new school superintendent, new, I don't know what elementary school this child came from, a new principal at Richneck Elementary School, and they wanted to cover this up and did not listen to the parents who were afraid the child was going to hurt someone? We need to, I was approached one day about unionization of teachers. I said, if the school board was doing a job, you wouldn't need them. But they haven't been. We need to consider unionization of teachers to protect themselves.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we have new business, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you think it would be appropriate in listening to the citizen comment about the importance of putting the city in a posture, in a position of always trying to provide some essential, basic fire protection to our residents, I'd like to ask Chief Wesley Rogers if he could just spend a moment to address the significance of the city's fire rating. Chief Rogers?
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
So the fire department was just recently evaluated by the insurance and services organization, and they come in and grade jurisdictions and fire departments on their fire service rating. Newport News received the highest rating possible, that is an ISO-1, so we're extremely proud of that. It's made up of three scores. They first judge your fire department, how well you respond, how well your manpower, your equipment. It also judges our water supply system. And I'm happy to report and proud that our water works department received the highest score ever issued by an ISO organization. And it also judges our emergency communications department. And so, very proud of those folks that run our 911 center, as they also receive one of the highest scores out there. So those three criteria were graded, and Newport News received that ISO-1 classification. And so, that says that we are more than well-prepared for disasters.
Thank you very much, Chief Rogers.
Thanks, chief.
I would like to officially congratulate our three council members, Tina Vick, Marcellus Harris III, and Rob Coleman, as they were sworn into office at this morning's swearing-in ceremony. City administration looks forward to collaborating with you to advance our shared goals and continue building a community where we're all proud to call home. I'd also like to extend my sincere congratulations to Vice Mayor Curtis Bethany III on his reelection to Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk?
I also want to ditto what the manager has said. Congratulations to the re-elected and newly-elected, and congratulations to the Vice Mayor on his reelection.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Vick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We can go somewhere else first.
Go ahead, the manager.
Okay.
I was waiting to follow Clea, and it's Councilman Long. But I just want to thank all of you this morning for just a wonderful celebration as we were getting sworn in. Myself, Councilman Harris, and Councilman, we welcome you, Councilman Coleman, here with us. But I have to just, one of my biggest things that have been on my heart since the election, and especially today, was to be able to come here and thank all of you citizens who have found it so important to vote for me to be able to continue sixteen years serving as your city councilwoman. It has been such a huge honor, and I have just appreciated the support from our past mayors councils that we have worked together to bring so many new things, particularly to the district where I serve, and that is the South District, because we have been able to bring new housing to our area, and not just any type of housing, but affordable housing, to be able to help our citizens afford where they can live, which puts them in such a better position to be able to be successful in life. Also, as being a part of our Choice Neighborhood Program Initiative where we were able to win the thirty million dollar grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to just totally recreate our Ridley and Marshall area, to be able to bring a new look, and what I say with the new look, also being able to give people a better sense of community and a better sense of belonging to a community that has greatness. And not only in the South District, I'm so proud, every time I go uptown to see our tech center, that was one of the things I was able to vote on too, to bring to Newport News, because it has allowed us, so many people are excited about being there, to shop there, bring their children, and have a great time. So with that and other things, it's just been such a wonderful experience. So I thank you for entrusting me to be able to serve. And lastly, I've been meaning to say this for the last two meetings, but for those of you who know, some of my big supporters, Dot Murray and Doreen Washington. Doreen has been ill for the last few months, and I just ask that you keep her in your prayers. And Doreen, I know you're watching, and I wish you Godspeed and to be able to strengthen yourself, to be able to feel better and actually come to the council meetings. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ely?
I'd like to congratulate, excuse me. I'd like to take this time to congratulate all our new elected members and re-elected members to council. This is an amazing team. We get things done, and the biggest thing, this team is about the community. So congratulations and welcome to the team. Also like to give my prayers out to Heritage High School. They lost one of their biggest supporters, and he was Heritage, Mr. Barbecue. So my prayers goes out to Heritage High School and the whole family. I also like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your, Mr. Mayor and city manager for your efforts with the youth basketball program. I'm getting text messages from Pastor Swan, he said, "It's standing room only, and the parents and kids are loving it." So thank you to the staff that made that happen, and to all the parents that are participating in the youth basketball, especially downtown. Thank you so much, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Harris?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out on tonight and braving the cold weather, to be out here with us on our first council meeting of the year. As it was already stated, I'm excited about being able to get started with our new council here, our new seatmate to my right here, Councilman Coleman. And just looking forward to all the exciting things that we have planned in the future, we're looking forward to, and continuing to uplift and bring those amenities to our city that many of our residents have asked for. So we're just going to continue to do all we can and work as hard as we can. Once again, congrats to Councilwoman Vick, who's been on council since, prior to me coming on. So I've been with her since my tenure here, and just looking forward to, like I say, continue to do great things. I do just want to piggyback on Councilman Ely's comments regarding a great loss in the city last night, Mr. Lloyd Barbecue Hicks. He was the, we call him the unofficial mayor of downtown Ferguson Heritage. He had an impact on so many people's lives that he probably didn't even know from just him being himself. And my prayers are sent up to his family, first and foremost, and to all of the staff members, everybody who came in contact with Barbecue, that's what we called him, that's what he's affectionately known as, because anybody who came in contact with Barbecue left feeling good, just about living. Because he was that type of person, his benevolence was unmatched, and his consideration for others is something that, I remember when I met him as a seventh grader, going over to Ferguson High School for practices, and there was nobody like Barbecue. And anybody who met him, anybody who had an opportunity to come into his, around him, they would know that you would always remember if you were around Barbecue. So prayers are sent up for them. And just looking forward, like I said, to, we had a great council retreat last week, and the bond that is continuing to be established and the work that's continuing to be done. I'm looking forward for great things here in the city of Newport News moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Long?
I also want to thank all the citizens' participation to come out tonight for the first council meeting. I was glad to be back here. Also want to congratulate the recently re-elected Councilman Harris and Councilman Vick, and then also newly-elected Coleman. I look forward to working with you and the rest of the team this upcoming year. I want to say thank you to Mr. Reverend Barnes for coming out and sharing your thanks all pros dad. I'm looking forward to the schedule, because I do want to attend one of those breakfasts in the near future. Also, to let citizens know that there's Restaurant Week going on, starting January 12th through the 26th. So I'll take the opportunity to get around to restaurants I have not been to in Newport News, and it just occurred to others to go out and check out a restaurant that you may have been interested in, but now it's the opportunity to really go out there and see, because of the discounted opportunities for their meal. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, just want to echo what my colleagues have said. I want to thank everybody that came out this morning for our reorganization meeting. And also, I see a lot of familiar faces. You were here this morning, you're here this evening. So once again, thank you so much. Just want to thank the council, Mr. Mayor. Want to thank the city staff as well for being so welcoming and opening your arms to me and being very patient as I go through my orientation process here, getting re-acclimated to the council. And I mean, there's a lot of changes have occurred, there's a lot of new faces on council, but it does feel eerily familiar and just really excited about what the future holds for not only our team, the entire team, our city team, but what we're looking for in the community to happen. One thing I forgot to do this morning that I wanted to follow up on was, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Pat Woodbury for her years of service on this council and to the community. There's a lot of sacrifice that has to come with public service and being an elected official. And, you know, and many of you know, Pat and I weren't always eye to eye on some issues, but I always respected her for her commitment to her constituents and her dignity. So, once again, Pat, if you're watching, please enjoy your retirement, and please know I'm going to do everything I possibly can to fill your shoes here and represent and serve the citizens of the Central District. But it's been a pleasure so far. I mean, tonight has been a real treat. I mean, I did not imagine that one of our fine citizens would come up here and make our police chief and the mayor blush all within five minutes. That was very nice, and looking forward to some other amazing opportunities to serve our citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Yes, just want to say thank you so much for everyone coming out. Glad you were able to make it safely. I think I'll continue my remarks from earlier this morning and just focus on new, not new council members, but I'm newly re-elected and newly elected. Just congratulations to Tina Vick. Appreciate you for your thoroughness. Appreciate you for your thoroughness, for your honesty. You are the, the bright smile on council for sure, and so it truly has been a pleasure serving with you, and I continue to, continue serving with you. B2, the third, see, we have three, the thirds up here. We got Councilman John R. Ely, you got me.
I'm the best third.
Don't, don't listen to him when we're on set, but we got three up here, but B2, who is definitely, if, I, I'll give him the title as the rock of council. Steady, firm, steadfast, those are, those are the words that come to mind when I think of B2. So I'm grateful to have him in the north with me. I can't believe I just said the north. Uptown. I'm grateful to have him up there with me, but nevertheless, I, I look forward to continuing to serve with you, sir. And Mr. Coleman, congratulations again. We are going to do a lot of great things together, and we're extremely grateful to have you on this team. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further.
Well, I'll just close. I just want, once again, it's, it's really, it's Tina and, and Rob and B2's day, so I'm not gonna say much. Just as a reminder, we have the MLK Day of Service with the police department, the sheriff's department. John will be out there, I'll be out there. I'm sure most of the council will be out there at the food bank. Chief will be out there, nine AM to one PM. So if you want to be, sorry, police, fire, sheriff, did I miss anyone? Okay. The whole crew will be out there Monday, nine to one, so come out there. We would love to bring, can, whether you want to have time, treasure, talent, a lot, a lot of need out there. I would love to see you out there. To my CNU family, always good to see all of you in the back. Thanks for being so dedicated. And Bishop and everyone else, thank you so much for coming out. We appreciate it. Have a great year. Rejourn.[1769.86]